All right, good evening. Well, this is the Town of East Bridgewater Planning Board Meeting. It's Monday evening, August 15th, 2022. We'll call it 7:00 PM. Currently present for the board, our member, Rob Ken, Christine Hanley, our clerk, Kevin Riley, our vice chairman, and myself, Roy Gardner, chairman. First item of business, minutes and bills for tonight. We have neither of those that need action for tonight, so we're going to move to our second item of business, which is a 7:00 PM public hearing for 84 Bridge LLC. Have that ad ready to be addressed, okay? Okay, at this point in time, I'd ask our clerk, Christine Hanley, to read the legal advertisement that had run prior to this meeting, if you would, Christine.
Town of East Bridgewater Planning Board Notice of Public Hearing. The planning board of the Town of East Bridgewater will hold a public hearing on Monday, August 15th, 2020, 2022, at 7:00 PM in the Town Office Building, 175 Central Street, large, second-floor conference room. The purpose of the hearing will be to review a Form B subdivision application and plan submitted by Silva Engineering on behalf of his client, 84 Bridge LLC. Owner of record, Greg Hager. The applicant is proposing a three-lot, single-family residential subdivision. The subject property is located at 0 and 84 Bridge Street, approximately 900 feet south of Central Street, and consists of approximately 4.7 acres of land. Zoning classification, Residence 1, R1, lot, as shown on East Bridgewater, assessors map 58, lots 31 and 36. The planning board, as required by the East Bridgewater subdivision rules and regulations and the Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 41, Section 81-T, seeks public input relative to this proposed subdivision. The plans are on file with the planning board, the planning building department, and can be reviewed between the hours of 8:30 AM to 4:30 PM, Monday through Thursday, and Friday, 8:30 AM to 12 noon. Notice published in the enterprise on Monday, August 1st, 2022, and Monday, August 8th, 2022.
Okay, at this time, I'm going to declare the public hearing open, and we'll ask the applicant to make their presentation. Mr. Silva, if you would, officially introduce yourself for the record.
Sure. My name is Lawrence Silva. I'm Silver Engineering Associates, offices at 1615 Bedford Street in Bridgewater, and I'm here on behalf of 84 Bridge LLC. The property, as was described in the summary, was that it's south of Central Street. It's slightly north of Chestnut Street, and it's on the east side of Bridge Street. And it's 4.87 acres of land, and it was the subject of a subdivision back in 1982, which was from the estate of Pur T. Benson. And from that subdivision, it was never built out, so the road was never constructed, the lots were never done, except for there was a, the first lot was a Form A lot, really, on Bridge Street, which is 74 Bridge Street. That was carved out, and obviously, that's an abutter to the project itself. On the opposite side of this proposed roadway is 84 Bridge Street, which was part of the area or adjacent to the area that was part of that subdivision. And it becomes part of this subdivision because we're going to actually increase the area that's associated with 84 Bridge Street and bring it up in compliance from a 30,000-square-foot lot to a 35,000-square-foot lot. So we're looking to try to increase the size of that. So, as I said, the subdivision road was not built out, and so what our subdivision, Pur's path, in recognition of the prior owner of the property, is that it's, the roadway is longer than what was originally proposed, and the cul-de-sac is flipped from the northern side to the southern side of the entrance road. As I said, 84 Bridge Street will be increased in size from 30,000 to 35,000, but it also gives us an opportunity, by reconfiguring it, to actually take a radius on the southerly direction, which was not in the original subdivision. It was a straight-line 40-foot right-of-way at that point on that side. It was that right angle there. So now that we were able to make it compliant for this subdivision. As you can see right, you can see there in the existing conditions, there you can see that there was a straight-line between 84 and the proposed right-of-way. There's no curve like there is on the northern side of the proposed road. So when you go to the, that was what was existing from the 1982 layout. So now, when you go to the one that has the, well, I'll tell you what, you can leave it there for now, because I'm just going to describe about the site itself. So the total area of the site, I tell you, is 4.7 acres. It has pretty significant topography. It goes from an elevation of about 85 out at Bridge Street, and to the rear of the site, it goes down to about 63. So that's a pretty good change in grade, which means that most everything goes from west to east in terms of runoff in this area, both in the existing condition and in the proposed condition. There are no wetlands on the site itself. The wetlands are adjacent to the property on the east, as you can see just at the far right of the page there. You can see that they're just off the property, just barely off the property. And so the roadway, so if I can go to the, if I can go to the one that shows the proposed subdivision. Okay, so this is the proposed subdivision, and as you can see, as I said, we got that, the radius now, we have that in next to Lot 31A, so we have that radius there. We've increased the size of that lot to the 35,000, I believe it is. And so by turning the cul-de-sac in the other direction, we're able to get what's called lots 1, 2, and 3 on this subdivision to be neatly laid out around that cul-de-sac. As you can see, on Lot 2, there is also a drainage easement, which extends off the back of the cul-de-sac, conveying drainage down towards the rear of Lot 2, which is where you'll see on the next page, I believe, the actual layout of the drainage. So here, this is where we have the proposed grading and drainage. And on this here, we have a pair of catch basins connected to a drainage manhole about 3/4 of the way down the roadway. And then from there, that manhole connects to the end of the cul-de-sac, where it also is joined by a double catch basin that brings in water, so thereby collecting all the stormwater from the site itself, from the subdivision road. Those are all deep sump catch basins, and then the conveyance going down through that drainage easement goes to a substantial stormwater management system to the rear of Lot 2. As you can see, there are two small, looks like basins, that at first water flows into. Those are two sediment for-bays for cleaning and getting water quality. And then from there, water then flows into the larger basin, which is an infiltration-detention basin. So in that basin, we encourage water to infiltrate and then allow for it to also drain to the rear, to the wetlands where it normally would drain. In the process of doing that, we reduce down the rate at which water leaves the site, so that for the 2, 10, and 100-year storms, the rate at which water leaves the property is less than what it currently is. And because of the infiltration component that we have within that basin, we also reduce the total volume that actually leaves the site itself. So it's a plus from that point of view, and also, the stormwater that leaves the site is actually brought to the standards, the stormwater management standards, and also the standards of the Town of East Bridgewater. So it's nice to have a design, in this case here, it's more of a straightforward design because the elevations allow for that by bringing us the grades to the rear. And so I think it's a pretty straightforward subdivision that is being proposed here. I think that's kind of the summary that we have for the project, and I think that I would be able to answer whatever questions that you might have.
All right, so I guess I'll start off. So just a point of clarification for everyone here in the room. This subdivision actually replaces a prior subdivision. It would be referred to as a superseding subdivision under Massachusetts general laws, as there was a prior subdivision approved several decades ago, which was never constructed at that site. Second item for clarification is the planning board will be acting, in addition to the approvals required under subdivision control, the planning board will be acting as the sole authority for stormwater management for this site. That'll be done simultaneously as part of our subdivision control hearing, which means that the stormwater management package that's submitted as part of the subdivision will be considered the stormwater management plans under the stormwater management bylaw in the Town of East Bridgewater. I think at this minute, that's the last things I'm going to say. I'll open it up to the board for any questions. I will ask one question, Larry. Have you received the comments we received from our engineering firm?
No, I have not. But I will say that in preparing for the meeting tonight, we did see that there were some, there were some typos in the summary document of the stormwater. So I had given, I want a copy of that revised summary page, but we're going to revise the report to reflect it. The content was the same, right, but it was just that in the summary, it didn't get transferred correctly into the tables. So we're going to update that for them. I don't know if that's what their comments were about, but I haven't seen anything from them.
Okay, so I just asked the office to make a note that we should forward a copy of the environmental report from, or the subdivision report from Environmental Partners that I believe came in late Friday. It may actually have come in after the office was closed. I'll forward a copy of that to each of the planning board members, as well as to Silver Engineering Associates. All right, and I'll go to the board at this point for questions, clarifications.
No, I just would be curious to see the comments from Environmental Partners, so.
Do you have anything, Christine, at this time? Okay. Members of the audience here, if you would like to ask a question, I would ask that we give your name and address. And, yes.
David Blanchard, 55 Bridge Street. Is that about the town forest?
Uh.
Yes, it does.
Yes, it does.
Yes, it does.
You're talking about expanding land. How are you going to expand it?
Excuse me?
You were talking about expanding to land to make it buildable back there. I know that used to be John and the farmer's land a long time ago. I'm just curious, you know, which way are you going to go?
I'm not sure what you mean by expand.
Well, you were saying that you're going to make a, as far as 4.7 acres there, how are you going to make that? You were talking about frontage or something like that. I was just curious.
Frontage gets created on the roadway. The land isn't expanding.
Okay. I thought you said something.
He's expanding, he's expanding the size of the lot at 84.
Oh, okay.
To make it in compliance with zoning.
Yeah, so I was just saying, the town forest is there, so you've got, you're pretty much landlocked there as far as.
No, it's an internal change in that lot line.
Okay.
I'm 31.
I was just curious.
Okay, anyone else?
John O'Connor, 74 Bridge Street. Basically, so I'm the abutter of the property. If you show on the actual roadway, it shows the underground electrical will be going underneath my existing fence line that's been there. I mean, I've been there seven years. Fence has been there. I knew the previous owner of 84 Bridge Street, Mr. Benson, and he told me that that property was, has been in the family for years and years and years. So I'm just, one, concerned about like what's going to happen with my fence line and all that. Is it going to be removed? Are they rewriting my lot that's been there? Also, I am the original, of the original subdivision, and if you look in the registry of deeds, it does say that my land is a covenant, so I'd be interested in hearing about that. Because that is, that was Pur Benson's original house that was built on the land to start the subdivision. And, you know, I mean, it's just, I'm concerned, like, you're building three houses out there. I mean, the wetlands, I don't care, you can say the elevations and all that. I walked that property multiple times with Mr. Benson and out where that proposed basin is. He had Addison wells out there that weren't but five feet deep, and there's running water there. I get it, right now, we're in a drought. They said they were going to dig a perk test. No one's been there to dig a perk test, you know. I'm just, you know, it just seems like this is all moving pretty quickly.
I'm concerned about the wetlands.
Well, I'm concerned about all the wetlands and where that, all that's going. I want, you know, where the water quality basin is going to be. How is that going to be inspected? What's, you know, you've got three lots, so you're going to put two cars, three cars in each lot, run in the salt off the roads, drain it in there?
All right, so let's start to try and address some of those. Number one, all of the wetlands issues belong to Conservation. They've been working.
Okay, and I brought my thing up to Conservation. I get it.
I'm speaking right now, please.
Okay.
We brought it up to Conservation.
And they told us.
I'm speaking, I'm speaking right now. Number one, all of the wetlands issues belong to Conservation. They've been working on this site for over a year. Everything has been flagged, and the flags have been confirmed by Conservation. Wetlands are their responsibility exclusively.
But they were part of.
If the fence is actually on the property that's been surveyed as part of this site, then the fence is going to have to be moved.
I'm not.
That's an issue between the abutters. If you wish to hire a surveyor to contest where that property line is shown on the plans, you have that legal right to do so. That's not an issue legally before the planning board under Massachusetts general laws.
Okay.
The basin that they've shown at that site clearly shows more than enough capacity to hold the water, to handle 100-year storm, which is the requirements for the planning board. If Conservation isn't satisfied with that from a conservation standpoint because of its proximity to the wetland, that's an action that Conservation would have to take under the Wetlands Protection Act. Every landowner in the Town of East Bridgewater and in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts has an absolute right to develop his land, as long as it complies with the zoning bylaws of the town. Every lot on this site, as proposed, would more than comply with the zoning bylaw.
So if this has been in for over a year, how did he just buy the land?
He can have a conditional purchase and sale agreement for decades if he wants to. That's an issue not before the planning.
No, that's fine. I'll bring it to the state. I'll investigate with the state. That's fine.
The only thing the planning board is responsible for is certifying that the applicant either owns the land or is acting as an agent for whoever owns the land. He doesn't actually even have to own it to be working on it, as long as he's got an agreement. I think that addresses the majority of the questions, but is there any other questions?
Apparently, it doesn't matter. If he owns the land, he can put, it's between us and him.
With the fence, it's going to have to be removed if he's putting an electrical line down there.
Right, so then he's going to have to pay for it if he wants to move it.
We're not going to discuss who has to pay for it.
No, I get that. I totally get that. But, you know, our concerns were brought up with the Conservation Board, and the Conservation Board told us to come to this meeting to bring it up. So we're just kind of getting the runaround here. I understand he's like a, you know, a staple in the town, but, I mean.
He's no different, he's no different than any other landowner in the town proposing to develop his land.
Seems like he is.
Under the laws in Massachusetts, if the fence is on his property, that's a trespass.
It's been there for.
It doesn't matter how long it's been there.
Okay.
If you want to question that, the only way you can legally do that is through an attorney and through the courts. We can't act on that.
So if he's going to take an electric, so basically what you're saying is he can do anything to our fence? It's been that way. That has been the line.
That's actually how the original landowner put it in.
I can't speak to where the original landowner put the fence in and how he divided the lot when he did his original division.
It should be record. If he, you just stated that this was.
Those dimensions on that plan are the same as the dimensions on the original plan. If the fence is on the other side of that line, then that fence technically belongs to whoever owns that land.
Well, it's, at the beginning, it starts on our property. At the end, it goes onto his property. So it is halfway on our property and halfway on his.
All right, so again, without trying to give you a legal opinion here, any of the fence that's on his property is technically his. And if you want to sort out how that works, you need to talk to an attorney, because I can't give you legal advice.
All right, that's fine. I'm done.
Would anyone else in the room have any questions, comments? So I'd like to have a motion to continue this public hearing until our next meeting, which will actually be sometime in mid-September, give or take. What's the actual date?
September 19th.
September 19th, because first Monday in September is Labor Day weekend. We don't, we can't meet on a state holiday. At that point, we'd like to see a response from the applicant on the engineering review that just came back in Friday.
Sure.
In the meantime, if we have any other comments back from the members of the board, we'll forward those comments to you as well, if they're related to.
Or any other departments or anyone else that might.
Anything we see, we'll get back to you.
Okay.
So can I entertain a motion to continue the public hearing until?
Before we go there, just a question, Larry. Was, or is the landowner and you guys, are you aware of the question with the fence?
We have, I was just, I was just looking at myself. I mean, our existing conditions does show most of the fence within the right-of-way. I mean, there's a, the first section of it looks like it's right on the line, but the majority of it seems like it tails into the.
Is that a stockade or?
It's a, low, low stockade.
And the property owner actually has started doing rubbing on the property. It would, yeah, it's just, and they actually came onto our property to cut part of our tree. So we're just concerned with construction being done, like what's going to happen with that existing fence.
So I think, as I said earlier, if the fence is actually impeding in the construction of the roadway and is actually on that, on the lot that's owned by the subdivider, then he has the right to remove the fence.
Is there a problem with just replacing it where it needs to be?
I can't speak for him. I can tell him what the issue is and see, you know, how we want to.
Under the good neighbor doctrine?
Is that?
I say, under the good neighbor doctrine.
I, I'll do everything I can to try to see if there's an amicable solution to it.
All right, anyone else?
And as Roy said also, they have the right to actually have a survey done to see whether or not they feel that the line is different than as we depicted. I mean, that's really, that's still within their right, too. If they think that we're showing a line that's not tapering the right way, I mean, that's really up to them. And if they did have another LanceVay or look at it, we always sit down with them if they have a difference of opinion, and we go over the evidence and find out whether or not there's some reason.
Yeah, I mean, it's one of those things. It looks like it's just.
It's not a huge, it's not a huge encroachment.
Right, but it is nevertheless.
Yeah. It's not a lot of sections of fence either. I mean, I don't know.
It's actually a fairly typical problem when a landowner puts up a fence between two properties that he owns. He's going to guess about where the line is and go, because he's not going to have a surveyor stake it for him, typically.
I'm going to write a book someday about all the, all the ways that people said that they indexed where they were putting their fence, how they decided to put it where they were.
All right, anyone else on the board? Anyone else in the room have any further questions? All right, we're back on our motion to continue the public hearing. Did we actually get the motion yet?
It's almost 7:15 on the 19th.
So we've got a motion, Riley. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, Ken. Any further discussion of the motion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 And we'll show that as a motion for, in favor, none opposed, unanimous vote of all members present voting. And for everyone's information, it will be in this room at approximately 7:15 PM, September 19th, all right?
Yes.
All right, thank you, all.
This is a point of information. Is there any need for me to be here or, I don't know if you're okay.
I'm pretty sure we're okay.
Yeah.
I just, one quick question, a little out of order here, but isn't there a second door on the west side of the building? Is there only one door way at the back?
No, I put the other door in.
Is that for the daycare?
What's that?
For the daycare, childcare center. I'll have a couple of questions that you might want to stay for.
There's another door. I'm sorry. You had another question, you said?
I wasn't here for that other hearing, so I have a couple of questions.
Oh.
So can you, maybe you want to hang for a little bit if that's not too inconvenient?
The other ones, now, I'll do whatever you need to do. That's fine.
Yeah, we have another, another ongoing subdivision hearing we've been working on All right, this is officially the ongoing public hearing for Knights Estates, which has been continued from July 18th, hopefully in a somewhat long-winded attempt to get some resolution here. So I'm going to declare the public hearing open at, we'll call it 7:27 PM. And for the record, if you could, members of the applicant's team, could you introduce yourselves?
Just, y'all have the last.
He'll hear you.
Ben Carroll, applicant.
Scott Ford, the attorney for the applicant.
Gigi Mundon, civil engineer.
Okay, Scott, it's a different guy over here tonight, so he's.
Came running right out the last time.
Be careful, okay? So, all right, so we've had multiple discussions with multiple different people here. Still not sure exactly how this is going to go, but I'll stop at that point and ask you guys, have you got any, anything you can update us on? Is there any progress being made with some of the issues that we've discussed about? The biggest single one being the water main and where's water going to come from?
Yeah. I mean, I don't think that's a solution that's going to be resolved prior to getting an up or down vote on this project. But we are going to be asking the planning board to submit a letter to the Board of Selectmen, asking the Board of Selectmen to make a formal request to the city of Brockton for water. And did we forward that along too?
Yeah. So I think. I did see a multi-sentence paragraph, basically stating, stating something along those lines.
Yeah, so it's.
Can I see it for a second?
Yeah, there's the letter.
So the genesis of this letter is there's a water agreement that created the Plymouth County Water District, which East Bridgewater and Brockton are both members of. It's the 1964 Inter-Municipal Water Act. It was an emergency act, really, to give the city of Brockton water. Section 10 of that act says that the select board of any town who is a member of the water district can request and receive water from any other town who's also a member of that district upon a request to both the city's water commission or the town's water commission and the central Plymouth County Water District and Water Commission. So we're requesting, in part of this is that the planning board, of course, we're open to changes in the letter, but we sent along a sort of a form letter. We're requesting the planning board endorse that and ask the select board to sign and endorse the letter to be sent to the statutorily required commissions to request water for the project as a means of getting a public water supply on the street.
Okay, so as part of the documentation we need, can you send a further copy of that document?
Absolutely.
That references the. That references the fact that we're all in the same water district and based on the fact that Brockton was allowed to put water mains to the deal with East Bridgewater and draw from an aquifer that at the time it was done served multiple towns in the Plymouth County area, including what was then deemed to be us because we're part of that water district.
Is there a specific email address or I guess what's the easiest way to get this to the board? I can drop off hard copies, I mean, whatever works.
Probably electronic if you're going to be editing it and...
Why don't, yes, can you send an electronic copy of it in an editable form, i.e. an attachment?
Like a word document or something, yeah.
And you can email it to me. I will email it to the entire board and to the Board of Selectmen and I believe the planning board would be more than willing to put a motion on the table and vote to ask the selectmen to initiate the process to get that taken care of. So I see from where we are, two, at least two specific conditions that we're going to have to put in our approval. Number one, that there is a water main that meets standard DPW requirements for the town of East Bridgewater that has an actual water connection at the Brockton line. That that water main have fire hydrants since there has to be a water main. And I think I've said this before, but maybe I should say it again for the record since the meeting's being televised. The whole rationale here with the water main and the roadway triggers back to the fact that there's certain, we can't tell you that that water main has to serve those houses, okay? Under subdivision control, we don't have that right. We do have the right to require the water main to be there from both a public safety standpoint, i.e. fire, and from the standpoint that if there are wells on that site, and there's another caveat there obviously, that the state is satisfied that that isn't within the plume of the Thatcher Street landfills, both the Thatcher Street, East Bridgewater and the Thatcher Street Brockton landfills, which are directly adjacent to each other to the rear, although some distance away, i.e. plus or minus 1,000 feet, give or take. In the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, a house without potable water has basically zero value because under the state Board of Health laws, or the health laws in Massachusetts, you cannot live in a house without potable water. And it has to be running water of one of two descriptions. It can be a well that meets state standards or a public water supply.
And I, yeah, I don't think, no one's questioning that obviously. And if, once the process has started and we've made the formal request to the city of Brockton, if the board is asking a water main to be put in the street and connect to the hydrants, I think at that point, once the line is there and there's a connection, whether wells are used to supply the potable water and the line is there as a prophylactic measure or whether the houses are tied right into the line, the concerns are addressed.
That's a private decision.
Yeah, I don't know if we need to get to that level on the...
I just wanted everyone to understand why we require the water main.
Understood.
Even if an applicant say, well, we're going to put in a well. Well, that's all well and good, but Massachusetts real estate values, especially houses that are going to sell for half a million dollars and up, suddenly have pretty low value the day that well fails if there's no potable water supply available there. Especially in a case like this where potentially it would take a long time to get one if there wasn't a water main in the street, because all of these other things in the background would have to be done after that. The second thing is we're going to require, and we'll put the language directly in our permit, that Brockton remove the language in their finding that says that the homeowners must form an association and pay for maintenance of the road basically indefinitely until the roadway is accepted as a public way. That's a flagrant violation of state law under our town council's guidance for decades. An applicant has a right to come to the planning board and propose a private roadway, which we very rarely if ever have done. I don't think we have ever done that except for one lot subdivisions because of the dual class of residents that happen once you start to do that. Everyone pays the same tax rates and the town is not allowed to modify tax rates because they have a private way. And the next thing that happens is immediately after that, within a year or two, the people come in when they realize they have to pay to maintain the road and to plow it, complain that they want a tax break or they want the town to accept the road. So the process always takes into account that it be accepted as a public way, the roadway be owned and maintained by the developer indefinitely until such time as he submitted all of the documentation required to make it become a public way. Now, understanding in East Bridgewater, we've never had a problem with that. When we get that package and it's ready to go, in my 40 years on the planning board, every roadway's been accepted. I don't want to try and speak for Brockton where they use a town council to do that, or city council, I'm sorry, a city council. Potentially, there's politics there that I don't want to talk about and get involved in. We do have a bit of a problem in that we've been told by council multiple times that we can't accept a public way until the connecting piece that it's coming off of has been accepted as a public way. It has to connect, any public way we accept has to be connected to a public way. So we're going to put at least one condition in our potential approval that states that very clearly.
Yeah, and just think that's, there's not a question on our end that the applicant would remain responsible for the entirety of the road, be it in Brockton or East Bridgewater, to the extent that require, I mean, just questioning whether East Bridgewater can tell Brockton to remove it. I know that's not technically what you're doing, and I'm just wondering for some very realistic reasons if that language, I mean, we will remain responsible for the entire road. We're telling you that and we'll tell the city of Brockton that. I think functionally, as long as the road is maintained and the developer maintains it, that would be the goal, requiring the language to be removed. I think there's a way to solve the problem without quite...
So I'll leave the complicated issues that that could get to, to the attorney.
Yeah. I think we've proposed...
Because if Brockton says they're not going to release lots until they seize the homeowner's documents, requiring the homeowners maintain the road.
Yeah.
We'll leave that alone. That's kind of on the other side of the table in a different room, so.
Yep, but we did state in one of the proposed conditions that we provided to the board from the last meeting that the developer will remain responsible for the portion of the road in Brockton until such time as it's accepted as a public way, so.
All right, so I believe that those are really the two issues that we've been wrestling with back and forth.
And I think we've addressed those and I think, you know...
I think as best as we can.
I mean, yeah, with the cooperation with the letter to the selectmen to get the water...
And a bit of a vacuum here since there's two different parties involved, one of which we have no control over. I think we've addressed those, so let's, I'll ask if any members of the board at this point have any questions they want to ask of the applicant in addition to what we've already discussed. Okay, so I'll back up and ask at this point, are we willing to put a motion on the table to grant approval to the subdivision Knights Estates, which would have all of our standard conditions for residential subdivision, including the two conditions whose wording I think will have to be worked out outside tonight's meeting, but would be included, and those being the specific language for the water main and the water connection, as well as the wording for the ownership one is fairly simple, but, and we won't put in it that Brockton has to...
Yeah, the maintenance of the way.
Maintenance of the roadway.
Does that also, the maintenance of the roadway include the acceptance of the first piece of Brockton too? Is that all under the same, or is that a third condition?
Well, let's say maybe that's a third condition that prior to acceptance of the roadway by the town of East Bridgewater, it'll be required that the city of Brockton has accepted their section of the road. Because we already know, and to be fair to anyone who's looking at buying a house there, they should probably be able to see that if they want to, if they want to dive that deep into the conditions.
And the applicant doesn't have a problem with that?
No.
Yeah.
And we have to adhere to what town council tells us to do and...
Yeah, prior to East Bridgewater accepting its portion, Brockton will have accepted theirs, yeah.
I mean, we could theoretically do it quote simultaneously, which would be possible since I'm sure the ASBIL plan is going to cover the entire roadway from, you know, from what, East Street.
Yeah, you wouldn't have it stop at the town line.
So we'll say three conditions and we'll work on that language, but given that, do we want to record a vote tonight? Or do we need to draft the entire decision with that language in it before we record the vote? I'll leave it up to the will of the board here.
I think because this involves two municipalities, we might want to be careful and draft the decision and then vote on it. I guess I just feel, we'd feel a little more comfortable in that regard.
And since there's only four of us tonight and we won't have a full vote in favor without Christine, then let's continue this to one more, one more night. We'll say 7:30 PM, September 19th, I believe was the date. If we could have a motion to that effect?
So moved.
Second.
And a motion, Riley, second ten, second Ken, to continue this public hearing until September 19th at 7:30 PM. And if we could, could you drop a letter off in the office just authorizing us to continue until the 19th?
Absolutely.
Yes, you need an email or...
Email's fine.
Okay.
Email's fine.
And so is the board going to be circulating a draft?
Yes, we will.
I mean, I think, in my mind, what we're doing tonight is we're going to be getting a draft, essentially a draft conditional approval, and then the vote will be up and down on that draft that we all collectively are working on, is it?
You will see that.
Is that a correct assumption?
We'll see that, I would say, within the next week.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll all have a chance to look at it. You'll include it.
Okay, and input and all that?
I can't say we'll modify it based on that input, but you will absolutely have a right to give us some feedback and input, yes.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
You vote on that? Will we record a vote? All those in favor of the motion to go to 7:30 on the 19th? Say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. That's a unanimous vote of all four regular members present voting, four in favor, none opposed.
Thank you. Thank you. So we'll make a formal request to continue and then we'll drop off the letter to the city of Brockton for the board's consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Larry, that didn't take too long. Okay, so we're going to look at the site plan, which is up on the screen right now. So quick background information, and I know this is a little bit redundant, but for everyone's, including everyone in the room, but everyone watching as well, this is the old, what used to be called, I believe CNC wire cut facility on Highland Street. The building has been vacant for some time. It's been purchased by an owner who runs a daycare facility in several different locations. And this will become a daycare facility. For everyone's understanding, if not aware, this is what's referred to as a Dover Amendment site. The Dover Amendment under state law, under the zoning act, makes childcare facilities, from a youth standpoint, exempt from zoning. But what the state does allow us to do under the site plan process is to require the planning board to still make sure that there's safe access and egress and at least minimally required parking at the site, as well as to entertain feedback from the public safety officials in the town to make sure that all of the public safety concerns have been met. And that's what we've been working on so far. The last piece for now is that the current plan that's up on the screen is what we're referring to as the Phase One Plan of a minimum of two-phase development. The Phase One Plan would allow a maximum number of daycare attendees at 75. The full Phase Two, I've heard a number of 125, although officially that hasn't been proposed yet, so I don't want to officially say that the Phase Two would raise that number to 125, but in part, the Phase One number is based on the capacity of the existing septic system at the site and what's required by the Board of Health. So given that, I'll open it up to questions from the board at this time.
So how many square feet is the building?
I'm sorry, I can't hear.
How many square feet is the building?
That's a good question. I didn't bring a file for this one. I don't remember what the exact square footage. I don't know if you have it there, Rory. This was originally a church, by the way, was it not?
So, so, so let me correct my prior statement. For several decades, that was CNC wire cut, which used to do all subcontract work for the Fox Pro Company. A lot of our cables were actually manufactured there across the street, but most recently, for maybe one or two years, it was a church.
Oh, it was only a short period of time.
It was, it may have been longer than one or two years, but it was a relatively short period of time in the life of that building. It was used as a church.
I wasn't focused in on the square footage only because I was, because the, everything that I measure based on this is based on occupancy.
How many classrooms is it?
I only have it based on the number of children and staff. And the 75 meter is the number on this Phase One. And that is based on the fact that the existing leaching system handles that amount. But I made them change tanks in order to bring that up to code and also to prepare for a Phase Two, which be an expansion of the septic system, leaching system that gets you to the 125.
So...
So the reason why we have a Phase One parking is because we need to have sufficient parking to go with that lower number. To get to the higher number, 125, it's a much more extensive site plan because we have to, we have to expand the parking to be able to handle, I believe it's like 42 spaces. We have to then be able to do stormwater management. And we also, like I said, we have to expand the septic system. And from a permitting point of view, it involves conservation approval to go to that next step because we're going to be doing some changes in grading and drainage.
Does the building have to expand for...
No. No, the building is sized the way it's going to be sized for the entire build out. In fact, some of the area to the rear of the building will be used to accommodate some of that additional parking that's needed. And, you know, we got to work within the confines of the lot in order to get the rest of it in there. We have conceptually laid out what it will take to do that, but like I say, that's a full engineered plan. This is, this is the Phase One sort of temporary kind of way of doing things in order to get them, get the occupancy in there now for that first phase.
Or copy of the assesses comment actually.
And do it safely, you know, and that's why they wanted that second way out with the asphalt millings.
Where would the additional parking go behind the building?
Some of it will be on the right side. We'll be pushing out some of that pavement line in there.
Yep.
Okay, it's going to require some retaining on that side to do that. We're going to put some of it to the rear.
Yep.
We'll have a turnaround in the back to be able to come back out. You see, the property goes back even beyond that fenced area. The property goes further back. So there is some room out there to do it. There will be no changes to the left side or the bottom of the screen there. There won't be any changes on that side. As you can see, the building was tight to the property line on that side. So our opportunities to get those additional spaces are by expanding the entrance road in on the right and then also to the rear. But we also got to leave a play area and everything else in the back too.
I developed childcare centers.
Oh, okay.
So one of the things that's been discussed, Christine, is the potential that if there is a problem, the Equity Industrial Partners who owns the property directly across the street, Rob, can you show that on an aerial overview, small enough so you can see the parking lot directly across the street? They've already, as we've been informed, they have a verbal okay from Equity Industrial Partners to use the vacant parking lot across the street, which currently isn't used and hasn't been used for quite a while.
So over here?
Employee parking, yes. It's about 150 feet up the street. And that would, employees would get there obviously before any, any children get there. What we've said was if the parking that they've shown on their revised Phase One Plan interferes with a circular drop-off pattern, which would be entrance on the top side of that plan, exit on the bottom side of that plan with a drop-off directly in front of the building, with the ability for some people to stop and park in those spaces in the front, if they're picking up children and they're not there or they need to go into the building for some reason. If that becomes a problem, then we'd require that all employee parking be done off-site in those spaces along... and those spaces along the side of the building be kept open for parents or caregivers in there, coming in to pick up children and need to go into the building to do paperwork and things like that. That should be pretty easy to monitor. It's a pretty visible location there.
So based on, you know, like just my standards, like eight employee parking spaces for 72 children, for, you need two teachers per classroom, plus you need an administrator. So it'd be just four classrooms or less that you'd be able to, you know, accommodate with the eight spaces. There's no way you can get to the 72 kids based on that?
It's not 72 kids. It's 75 total. That's staff and children.
Okay.
The 75, that's what that is.
So, one of my concerns is, like, when you drive in and drive out, it's a tight site in the front, and it's very close to the light. So you might have some stacking of cars because you're, once you kind of come through and you don't have, there'll be a pause where you might have people crossing from the raised sidewalk over to the front of the building. And I just want to make sure that, you know, we're prepared, that you might have stacking of cars out on that road when you have drop-off and pickup. What happens in this scenario is that you, you know, I know that it can be staggered, but it does happen.
So one of the things we've also said is, there's a potential, we're going to require that outlet side of the building be labeled "right turn only," so you have to go Highland, west on Highland Street? Because there's a clear potential that cars that want to go left off of Highland Street into the entrance side of that building?
That's where you could get the conflict.
Would be blocking cars trying to get out that want to turn left to go down Highland Street.
You also might get them backing up towards Route 18 as they file in and they're trying to.
The conflict would be with anyone else that wants to continue down Highland from east to west, and then those exiting cars. But, I don't know, I guess it depends on how the scheduling is done in terms of, you know? I mean, I remember when we did, years ago, the old McIntyre Dairy in Bridgewater, when that was converted over to a school, that was a K-6 school that we did there. And in that case, we had the luxury of a circular driveway around the entire place. We had the actual children drop off to the rear. But I think that if you, you know, if you condition this Phase One, as Roy's saying, that you, they have to invoke other options, such as the one across the street, if there is an issue that's not in terms of how it's functioning. Maybe it's you, maybe you put a condition in that allows for you to review it after it's up and operating after a certain period of time in this Phase One.
That's not the building, Ellen, right?
What's that? It wouldn't print the assessors card, it gave me a security alert? Try twice.
Can you get the square foot area of the building? That's also one of the numbers on the assessors card.
I just, we've got that from the interactive map.
I had my file with me. I would have had that, but I don't. You can click it on there, right? And get that card, right?
Can you look at the assessors card?
Yeah, he can get it right here.
Ellen?
Hello?
Fifty-six thousand?
That's the lot?
That's the lot.
Seven thousand square feet?
Yeah. Yeah. Seven thousand square feet. I should say residential area.
I know.
Instead of building size. Or maybe they just wanted to do two lines and have a place to do it?
The Styles Warehouse.
That could date all the way back to when that area was considered primarily residential because that building's been there quite a while.
Yeah. But you can see, though, like, even in that view there, you can see there is some room for me to work with on the backside.
Yeah.
You can see there's sort of, I'll be dealing with a conflict on the right side, it looks like, between the opinions as to what that right sideline is, right?
Yeah, it's a little...
They both have two opinions there. That's why they've got kind of a crazy line there.
Yep.
Between that property and the next one.
Fifty by 150? Sound right?
So in between the two raised sidewalks that you have, is that going to be landscaping?
It was, it's grassed area now, you know, it's a lawn area now. It was kind of a landscaped area. My guess would be is that it, because we're going to be going into Phase Two right away. So I would say that, you'd see the sign is located in there now. So the sign would be in there, and...
What sign?
To some degree, it's landscaping. I don't know if, can you do a drive-by? If he does a drive-by, you can kind of see that area.
I can see that.
So it's sort of like a little bit of a sign area there.
Yep. The area between where you park and the raised sidewalks to the building?
That's currently paved.
That's currently paved.
We've taken out the striping that we originally were showing there in order to address the comments, and to create this one where, in fact, you can see on the right side of the entrance drive, there were some parallel parking spots there. We took those out.
Yep.
In this scenario, in order to be able to allow for a better circulation.
So the parallel parking for...
Doesn't start until after the, until after the turn for the drop-off.
So do you have any concerns with people parallel parking there and then trying to, like?
Come back out?
Yeah.
Well, that's employee parking. They know it's going to be awkward.
Like seven spots.
I know.
People parking here?
Into like a area where people are pulling into.
Yeah, but people will park there if there's nowhere else to go.
And has the fire department looked at this?
Yeah.
Or they're okay with it?
They've been looking at it with them. Yes, we actually discussed that in our last track meeting.
Okay.
And a lot of those areas in the front of the building that were parking spaces are just striped areas now, to keep it so that there are no parking areas. So all that pink striping is to make it so that nobody is trying to leave vehicles there. That we're trying to keep that so that it is a flow going back out.
We'd suggest like a striped sidewalk going across the way so that people have a visual area of how you're crossing from the parking to, you know, you basically have a drive lane between where the parents are getting the kids out of the car and they're bringing them into the building.
Right.
And that's the main thoroughfare for any traffic coming in. What's going to happen is when people can't find a parking spot in those 12 spaces, they're going to circulate right back around. So that was just one suggestion, is that you need a clear pedestrian path from the parking over because the conflicts between the parents and kids and the traffic.
Yeah, so change that, the striping in that area, bring it across as a crosswalk, basically, right there.
Yeah.
Yeah, right to the door, wherever the actual...
Right to the door, which is right. It's almost central to that side, maybe right of center. So it's right about there, maybe.
Yep.
Around the end in concrete or something like that.
I think the discussion we've had, I think it potentially takes action with conservation, but the discussion we've had is that the parking on what would be the east side of the building that's currently labeled employee parking, when the parking lot gets expanded, that would probably be 90-degree parking. That line would move up, or the paved area where the parking, that line would move up.
Yeah, it'll be 90-degree parking, and it'll be, they'll be retaining on that right on the side there, in order to be able to achieve that.
So we'd end up, I think some, I think one of the meetings we had, we discussed it was somewhere around 20 to 22 parking spaces on that side of the building before the expansion of the numbers up to 125. And there's also some hope that was discussed at a prior meeting that potentially by the time they're ready to go to 125, there may be sewer capability there.
I told her not to hold her breath.
Well, that's a, there's obviously a whole bunch of steps that need to happen.
Yeah, that have to happen before that. Plus, I don't want to be on the other side of the table, because on the other side of the table, I represented a guy who was downstream of the Brockton Wastewater Treatment Plant. So, he gets an awful lot of flow down there.
Okay, so what the building inspector has asked is, is we just vote to accept this as the Phase One site plan, so he has it in his records as an accepted site plan, with everyone's understanding and agreement that this is a temporary site plan to cover the current potential enrollment of a total of 75 people in that building? And it will be replaced with additional parking and some more finished actual paving work on the site.
I think that with that, with that, just that edit, to be able to put in a dedicated connecting walkway from the double sidewalk into the entrance, it'd be nice if I could get them to do an LED sign or something. I don't know if they have the ability to get an LED sign in there. A flashing sign. Might be power right there. Those don't take much power, I don't think, to do them, right? I think that would be good if I could get them to do that. Would give more awareness, especially where you got early morning and afternoon drop-offs and pickups, which in wintertime is, you know, questionable daylight.
Do you have parking lot lighting proposed?
I have not seen a lighting plan proposed as of yet. I have not had anything to do with the architectural part of the building itself. We've only been dealing with, we started dealing with just the septic part of it and then got involved in the site-related stuff.
I know the building inspector has been talking to the owner about the architectural and the fire departments, Deputy Fire Chief, Safety Officer, been talking about the layout of the rooms and what's required inside. And the building inspector as well, because there's certain requirements for the rooms inside and so on and so forth.
Does the utility pole need to be relocated?
I was just going to ask, is that driveway to the far side of that utility pole or the near side?
I believe if you look on that sketch plan, I believe it's...
Comes out this side of it.
It's right there.
They already have an asphalt apron there.
Yeah.
It comes out on the west side of the telephone pole.
Right there. Let's see, we're trying to keep it all within the allowed disturbance area under the initial approvals by conservation, and then, like I say, the larger one will be, have full order conditions and everything.
So can we get a motion to advise the building inspector that we're okay with this plan with the addition of a marked crosswalk between the raised sidewalk area in the front of the building near the front door?
I would make a motion to approve the Phase One site plan for 125 Highland Street with conditions, those being that there be clearly marked entrance and exit signage, that there be clearly marked employee parking only on the easterly side of the building, that a crosswalk be installed, crosswalk marking be installed from the front parking area to the building, and that a one-way sign be installed for the traffic flow within the site. Finally, that the matter come back before the board April of 2023 for further review and progress with regard to a Phase Two.
Second.
So is, what is the point of April? Is it like so many months after they open, or like by April, they may not even be open?
Pick a time. I'm just trying to give, that's eight months, I think I calculated it out, so no particular magic to it.
So the build-out of the space is going to take, could take like six months, so...
Oh, they have been building out.
Yes, she wants to be open September 1st.
They have been doing extensive work inside.
They're going to open in September.
Yeah, really?
That's her ambition.
Yeah, very ambitious.
So that's kind of the...
That's the plan, whether or not they can or not.
Their ambition becomes my stress.
The owner was present last time, and basically they're in a situation where they've given up, or they're at the end of their existing lease, so they kind of need to get into here.
At least one of their sites, the lease runs out, I think at the end of August.
Yeah.
Is the interior of the building acceptable for...
The only thing I would add is to, just to make sure that there's adequate lighting in that area.
Sure. I'll add that.
I know the building inspector's been working on that, I know that.
Yeah.
Okay, so that's a motion. Did we get a second, Rob?
Yes.
Second Ken? Further discussion on the motion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? We'll show that as four in favor and none opposed. That's a unanimous vote of all four regular members present in voting. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. And I hate it in my office when I use magenta.
All right, one other item we need to talk about. I gave a copy just to everybody except... I didn't have time to email this to you, Rob, so we can get it on the screen, but... So Attorney Pellegrini, representing Rhino Industrial Capital, Industrial Partners LLC, I think, has come back to us with some feedback from the legal team for the investors that are in the process of hiring the primary construction company that's going to be responsible for this site. And there are going to be some changes in ownership, which, let's just say, again, not legal definition, but there's going to be shares of some kind, shared among multiple people. And at least one set of attorneys isn't happy with the Condition Five that basically says any change of ownership is going to require formal action by the planning board as a change to the special permit. That's basically what the existing language in Condition Five says. Now, the actual intent in Condition Five is to try and avoid the problem that we get into where we've issued a special permit for type A building, and they come back with a totally different building with a totally different use, and say that, well, we've already got a special permit for the site, we don't need to do anything. So this reworked language complements of Member Riley, basically has the same first sentence, terms and conditions here, "It shall be considered as permanent and should run with title of the premises," i.e. it runs with the land. "No changes to the conditions listed herein will be allowed with our prior written approval of the planning board." So those two statements are pretty clear. And one of the conditions that that actually covers is the use, which is defined as part of the special permit application. Then the transfer part of the language has been reworded to say, "Any transfer of this permit which would occur by way of a change of record ownership of the premises and which would result in a change of use of the premises specified herein shall be deemed to require action by the planning board as a special permit site plan approval modification, and must be duly filed and approved prior to actual transfer of ownership of the premises." Now, to some extent, Paragraph One already says that. Paragraph Two says it in pretty blunt and clear language, I think. So, technically speaking, based on past town council advice, rewording a condition that basically doesn't change the intent of the condition, it is basically just considered a text change. In this particular case, I would want to see the special permit redrawn with this language changed on Paragraph Five. And that permit filed with the town clerk, so she has a correct record of it, and then we would forward that revised special permit with a requirement that it be recorded at the registry of deeds by the applicant with a copy of the recording documentation provided provided back to the planning board prior to issuance of a building permit. So, given all of that, do we have any questions from the members here? Again, we're not really modifying the special permit, we're changing the specific text in Condition Five to, I think, more clearly say what we were trying to say in the original Condition Five and be a little bit more specific, so. Comments, questions? All right, so could we have a motion to proceed with rewording Condition Number Five and redrafting the special permit and recording it or filing it with the town clerk and sending a copy to the applicant to be recorded at the registry of deeds?
So, moved.
Second.
So, we got a motion, Ken, second Riley. Any further discussion on the motion? All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? And we'll show that as unanimous vote of all four members present and voting, four in favor and none opposed. Thank you all. Now, is there anything else we need to act on, discuss tonight, ladies? Is there anything, any other members of the board wanted to discuss? I guess that means at this point we entertain a motion to adjourn.
Need Mr. Lawler for that.
Motion to adjourn.
So, moved.
So, we got a motion, Riley, second.
Second.
Second, Ken, to adjourn. All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? We'll show that as unanimous vote of all four regular members present and voting, four in favor and none opposed. We'll call it 8:12 PM. Thank you all.